Why would we agents to apply? Of the United States.
Thank you very much. This is the Register of County Council meeting, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We have a call on. Approval of current agenda.
I would so move.
We will have to second Tracy to approve the agenda as published in comments, all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of minutes for the January third, two thousand and twenty-three minute. Mexico, Nebraska. For the minutes. You can say no more comments? No more comments, all favor?
Aye.
Well, the comments, yes. You have a new request in the sheriff's department? Uh, no old business, new business. We have a resolution to apply for. Arca grant funding for our water line. Going to water tanks, so. I'll go ahead and do this. Resolution authorizing this mission of our local government project, Arca grants application to the state loan and investment board. On behalf, on behalf of the governing body of the town of Rochester, Wyoming, for the purpose of replacement, Rochester. GIP water transmission main project. Whereas the governing body of the town of Rochester, Wyoming desires to participate in local government project, Arca grant program to assist in financing this request. Whereas local government project, Arca grant program requires a certain criteria being met that's describing loan. And investment boards, rules, regulations, covering the program. And to the best farnesses application needs this criteria. And whereas if any of these creative grant funds are not, are later deemed not to comply with same criteria or criteria of the American Rescue Plan Act. The grant can agrees to repay the ineligible grant fund within fifteen days of dispatch findings to the offices of State and Investment Board. Now therefore being resolved by the governing body of the town of Rochester, that the grant application amount of two million seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Needs to be in the State and Investment Board for consideration at the next board meeting for application processing, assistance funding replacement of Rochester GIP water transmission line. Being therefore that P R D card mirrors your wide destination is authorized your representative of the town of Rochester to pack on behalf of the governing body. As a matter of, on all matters related to this grant application. So that's the resolution. This starts the process into getting some of our money. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution. This will move.
I'll second.
All right. Second my Jeff. Any more discussions? Any more discussion?
I, I just wanted to say one thing. That, that's just to send the application in. If somebody sees like the two point seven five billion dollars on there, we have to do this just even. Send an application to it. This is the one of the things that you have to do to be able to send it in there. It's not saying that. We're getting the money. That's just to be able to send it in, just making that clear, so.
I just want to point out, we live in a state that relies on direct distribution. The large municipal projects usually municipality will have the funds. For capital expenditures outright and rely on state distribution mechanism that. Worthy of us to participate in. The bugs are out there. Putting our name in the hat. It's worthwhile.
Yeah, I did. Since we don't have M R G or middle ground to grant money anymore at this point, which it used to be the, the source for running projects like this is a. Kind of replacement or it's a fix right now for us, so. More discussion? Okay, let's do move the second. All favor?
Aye.
All goes, curious. Okay. Ten eighty-four, Redaway Street, Kimbury, All-Stars, variance. Okay.
Hello. Hello.
Please, 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 thank you.
Hello, my name is Marla Johnson. I am here asking if we could have four H pigs from April to August.
And how many pigs are you going to have?
Four.
And this is in support of your four H endeavor this year?
Yes, sir.
And to show them that it's four H program?
Yes, sir.
You've done this before, right?
Yes, sir. How many did you have last year? Four also?
Were there any problems with the four that you had previous years?
They were sick for a long time, but then they got fixed around there.
They don't know any complaints yet, not right there. I would, yeah, I agree.
Why would move to allow for a temporary livestock? Maybe variants for one zero eight four railway street. Uh, the kind of April first through when?
Um, August.
August.
Well, I think the sale this year is probably like around the sixth or it's usually before the tenth of August. Yeah.
The low to the top year.
Now that was a bad day.
The thirty-one day one?
Yes.
No, I'm just thirty-first.
We move the second to three, there is a request. Any more discussion? Any more discussion? All favor?
Aye.
I propose, aye. Thank you.
Chair was in for council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir. All right, thank you very much. Mayor's reports. I did attend to our FEMA kickoff for the house of radiation plan. Is that the, we do very five years in order to get the details of the need and we have participated, so. I sat to that paint, watching the paint drying session with the. Talked to. We've talked, reading discussion with the. Parks and the story sites about M O U Connor. Trying to update that. He doesn't do updates every, a twenty-year M O U with. Three years every five years for twenty or four times, so it's twenty years for cycle, but we have some issues with that, how we're being reimbursed and what the future plans of the park are, so we just have. Whether in discussion, let's see where that goes. She was the Parks Unit headman from. Sherry. Shaver was, was receptive to ideas, could take our ideas to shot him. It's only the stuff she can't decide on, of course. Requested January thirty-first to have a workshop for the. Fire district discuss our M O U down that's been offered in there, so. You guys have a short time. They can come on the thirty-first Tuesday. Deciding, well, we usually have workshops at five thirty.
Five thirty.
Five thirty. Now this, I'll just tell Rita. That, that will work for them. We'll notify you when he heads up on that. And. The county did award the bid for to regular range services for the Wolf Creek project today, this morning, so. There was, there wasn't any discussion on one. So it's a high percent housing plus projects that we're. We're working on that to redo the road from basically from one unit to bridge. And that's the, it's been the process. To do that, that much of it, so it is, that's all I have. For our projects, go.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I don't know if I need to hit on all these or what's in from the last two, three, you kind of met here. Uh, just like what Peter said, with the Wolf Creek Road, the construction agents both moved onward with that one. Uh, one thing I want to mention there that we will be doing some Arca C A on that, which I just help out since I'm kind of. Here's, so my help might go down and if there's something to talk to the guys or if there's something that we. The engineers are trying to dive out and share them every day. They don't need to, to hopefully try and take care of some of that here. Um, keep the cost down a little bit. Um, the transportation master plan, the T R pathway, the over largely all that stuff is kind of the same. I wanted to touch on the. Arca funding a little bit. We are, we're not done with that grant yet. It's due on the twentieth, January twenty-third. Um, so this week we're planning on finishing that up after you guys voted on this. This evening we finish that up and get that stuff off. And with any luck, I don't know what our chances are of getting that, but I think it's probably fairly low at this point. I don't know, but it's worth a shot. Try to. Get something with what we found out through that twelve inch water main project on Main Street and finding out what type of light there. We need to do something with that transition thing. It's just kind of a. Problem we haven't, I probably shouldn't talk about it, so something happened tomorrow. So, um, with that, if we don't get. Arca funding on that, probably, I didn't get it on the, I think it leaves by end, but S R F, so try to. Keep going after some money, um, finding some kind of a, a path rate and. Help us pay for that. There's no way we're gonna be able to pay for that full project ourselves, so. If this doesn't go, we'll probably have stuff coming through here again, trying to go after some more money for that, hopefully. Sooner rather than later, try to find some money for that to replace that water line.
Well, is that a whole line? Was that a steel one?
It's ductile iron pipe. I was gonna spell that out. I'm gonna need metal to go on there. I can spell all, but yeah, ductile iron pipe. So part of it is looks. Um, when we tore all the stuff out of Main Street, there's a section of it that, that will, it looks pretty good, but in other parts of it. I should, I'm gonna say, but. I took my knife over there and kind of just started messing around with pipe. I was able to stick my pocket knife to the side of it, to get a spot. So that tells me that. Well, obviously it is not in good shape. So if I can go through, pipe does have, one and a half. Eighty, ninety P S I and I go over there and shut my knife through it, well, then we kind of have a problem pretty much, so. After we kind of found that out, I thought, you know, maybe it would be in good shape after digging that up and seeing what it's like. We know that there's a problem there now, so we have to try to go after it. Get it fixed, so we don't end up. You know, in a bad situation, where we know that there's an issue there. We can't just pretend like we didn't see it, so. Um, hopefully with that, I hope, hopefully we can find some money or then get some money and. Move on and get the, work on getting that line replaced and get it replaced with some. I'm thinking we might be able to go with some sixteen inch PVC pipe. That way it'd be good for the next fifty years or longer. Um, if this town grows, if. There's regionalization done between Dayton, Rochester, to the whole valley. They put in the pipe wide and leave that's the main transmission line to go to the storage tanks down the road twenty years from now. We have upsized enough to give better platter flow for the whole town. So that's just kind of an option there. Obviously, we'll go back with the same size, twelve inch, but. Probably it'd be smarter to, I mean, it's gonna be there for. For present time. And those, those things will be used for, uh, storing water, for example, so. That's kind of a, gonna be a, I'm trying to, it's gonna be a big push to try to find some money for that, to try to do that, though. Because we're kind of, I have a feeling we're kind of living on borrowed time with that line after seeing what come out of there, so. I'll get off that one, go on to the next one. Uh, some of those guys really haven't started. I mean, it's just, so they still haven't done anything out there. I hope it's just. Too cold or they're busy doing some other projects in town. It's not that I, I don't mind not being out here when it's freezing and putting the utilities, but by the way, they, they cost, but. Um, and obviously, the grid is going again. See, so they had some steel shop here the last couple of days and maybe yesterday, I think. Certainly, so, but it's still, uh, with that, any questions? Kind of over a lot of it.
What's their town's thoughts on matching funds for that Arca grant, do we know?
Well, right now, it's staying that is coming from our own little pocket, but if we, this doesn't work out, we can go after. Funding, uh, funding through S R F for that and try to get some other funding other ways. It's kind of a quick. This one's kind of a quick one, so I have to put something in that application. I don't have anything else to put in there, so, and I have to have some matching in there, otherwise. We're a hundred percent not gonna get it, so we have to, that we're putting towards an effort. You know, replacing the section that we did, I don't, I, I think what helps us out, like, we're trying to. Do as much as we could right now with the funding that we have, the money that we have, and we're going to put up. Uh, some money to try to move this along, so we, we definitely have some skin in the, it's not like we're gonna go ask for. All the money to pay for the whole project, but we will be matched, do this match on, on it, so.
Thank you for getting that on the intended use part.
Yeah, we got that on there. That way we can do ours and ours when I do, so. Any other questions?
No, thanks a lot.
Spencer. Mayor and Council. Well, after all that, I'll, I'll keep this long and short. So calls for service mainly just a lot of calls, a couple of parking complaint calls. One of them was related to the. Incident where the fire truck was unable to turn around a cul-de-sac due to somebody's illegal parking. Um, contacted them and kept a close eye on that area and they, they changed their behavior, it's, but. I don't think that's gonna be a problem. Another one was that somebody was parking next door to a fire hydrant and they were gone about a time I, I got down there. Beyond that, um, as kind of from my report, I list out in more detail if you need more detail. Working on, uh, M O U with the sheriff's office. Sheriff Dominguez actually reached out to me today with some final things that he's drafting up. Um, had a couple of questions, so responded back to those. We should have a working M O U with the sheriff's office very soon. Also working on an M O U town with my canine. Have contacted some other handlers that have. Ran personal dogs for, for use like in the city of Sharon, city of Sharon actually had several dogs. Through history that were personally on dogs, tracking dogs included, so some bloodhounds, some other tracking dogs, drug detection dogs. Things like that, so that's been a good resource to contact them and, and work something out. Um, on another positive note, that ran the dog over to Gillette to the trainers and she did very well again today and they're, they're very impressed with her. Um, happy that that's, that's what they're reporting to me. They have a lot of breed experience and a lot of law enforcement experience and for them to say that she's. You know, they said basically today, they said that I, I lucked out when I got her, so. It's a, you know, good things to hear. My Marshall's message for this, this. Uh, two-week period is just a, a message for people to keep their sidewalks clear, snow on ice. And listen to that ordinance number down there, you know, as we seen around town with the, we've got the warm weather, but those people that did clear up their sidewalks. You know, we've got patches of ice, we've got some green magic issues. It's now it's about the ones that were diligent and, and did what they're supposed to, clearing it off. Those sidewalks are nice and dry and easy to walk on. And that was one of the things that came out of the planning commission was people want more sidewalks in town, so. I like to see people that have sidewalks take better care of the ones that we do have and. And, uh, that was my message. Anybody have any questions or?
No. Curious about, who came in? Thank you.
Thank you.
Spencer. Um, special committee reports, uh, next, John Carsworth names this Thursday. Um, you'll be here in the registered town hall. And so.
Congratulations on our Marshall being the one hundredth customer. With his picture in the paper, I think I saw.
So, Don, you have something for the fire district? In each one of the. Piece of paper there, indicating what we've done this last year. Thirty-three medical calls in Rochester itself. Grand total of fifty medical calls total. There again, I'll reiterate, the fire district, there's nothing to pay with any part of it. Working on medical calls, we still have to respond. About eight hundred and eighty-four hours of volunteer time was dedicated to our calls this last year. And we're now at about thirty calls. This year compared to last year, which is, by the way, I just should stay home. So does, was the man hours, was that comparable or does it, is it, I didn't see it give calls kind of require different man hours, but, you know, you gotta, is it? In, uh, just. Last year we had. A hundred and eighty-one calls. We had eleven hundred and sixteen three hours. Other times it's true. Every four, we had a hundred and thirty-one calls, eight hundred and six hours. It kind of, so it, it kind of, it kind of tracks, tracked the number, obviously not all, right? So if you have a hundred, yeah, a hundred and thirty-one, it's, it's, that's, that's probably.
Yeah, vehicle expense and, um. The range, range fire calls take a whole lot of man hours, so when those are down, when hours come down, most of the medical calls. Average about the same amount of time by the time one, I don't think, takes a worse one out of it.
Right, yeah. Is it, is the training up or down as far as the mountain? Training is actually down. You need to get more people involved. Training part of it. Like to get more people involved, the fire part, thirteen of us just. Runs us pretty, pretty heavy. You might find more volunteer if you do it. You can. Well, thank you. Does, um. Your financial support from the town? Do you know where? Right now, the only thing we have is the, a building and half of the utilities. And there's, there are sometimes when people go to training meetings and that stuff, why do we have? I think we did something on air packs and. Right, you, you actually bought one air pack? In the past, we have, we have supported something, correct, to get their. E M T or whatever. Right. Which appreciated. You think there's, you think there's more of a need? Or more? I think that's gonna, I think that's gonna come up in our, in our workshop. Does it? Yeah, that's, I'm sure that's supposed to fill the areas, I mean. Yes, sir. Okay. We'll see what, we'll see what the board. Well, it's ten and last to know even beforehand. Right. Instead of you blind sided like, yeah. We needed it for a long time and never. We've always, I've always been interested in, you know, those particular need because I know what we used to do and it seemed like it worked out really well. Okay. Yeah, life's been, to entertain something. Of some sorts, of some sort of financial health. Medical situations going up in the town and that stuff. Okay. Thank you, Don. Yep. Thanks, honey. You know, some special reports, go. Uh, approval, treasury report.
We didn't move any money around this time, um. So everything's kind of just sitting where it's at. Our bottom line is pretty close to the same as it was. Few weeks ago, even though the amount of money we've spent, so we're still making back a lot in interest. And then besides the treasures report, I provided everyone a budget worksheet. So you can look over that and I did make some notes in that as well. So you'll see on the first page, you've got that on the budget worksheet. Like the franchise fees, we got eight cents for, that's from visionary. That's not a typo. That's for real.
Eight cents. Well, you gotta understand, most of the stuff that they do is about. You can't, you can't charge franchise fees and that goes away from our.
Just, so. An actual check came for eight cents.
So I didn't know how to put it in cash, it's more like.
Anyway, it's, it's not so much we want any from the franchise, it's just the fact we haven't established a relationship between the, between the. Franchising and the town of Rochester, or where we, where they can and that, okay, things. What they can use, that's, that's really cool. If there are all that stuff, now it could go on to the. Internet services and stuff like that, that's not, that's too, that's too, that's too long time, which we kind of. On that note, I'd move to set.
There's a few more notes on this that I want you guys to look over, because this is our workshop where, where like on the budget worksheet, it's the not that packet. Your budget worksheet. Because all part of the treasures report, this is all our money, so. There. All right, so that's where, on that one, for at the bottom where it says franchise fees, that's where that was on the first page, and then on the second page where it has interest earned, the reason that's so high is that's where that ten thousand is sitting right now. That we got, there was cash out of our peak investment, so they haven't given us the instructions to put it into new investments, so it's sitting there. So I do plan to move that into our P I F account, so it can draw more interest in that account. But I just wanted you to be aware, that's where that money is sitting. Um, so let's see. Then those are all things. Couple other things, so on the Connor battlefield, that was really high because we put the bandstand in, so that's on page three at the very bottom. And there's two different line items that are really high. I'm actually gonna combine that into one line item, but that's just all for the bandstand that we did. Fine.
Part of the agreement that we're working, to say, um, improvements to their part.
Yes. So on page four, um, there's mercantile expenses. The taxes come out of that, there's like five thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars worth of taxes. That we pay on that building, so it's not that we've had that many expenses from the building, that's primarily taxes that we pay.
Our primary tax, anything over fifty-one percent of building, it's on, but, but municipality, it has. And it's a commercial business and it becomes part of the actual property.
And then the other economic project is the caboose, which is coming along and I haven't even peeked in a while. I'm waiting. You keep calling Gary, I'm, I'm very anxious, but. We're almost to the point of ordering the appliances, so.
It'll be coming this summer?
Yes, that's the plan. But the, all the contractors have really slowed up from coming and doing their final touches, like the electrician has been. Kind of slowly slow coming back and the plumber, so we've been waiting on those people to come and do that. The cabinets have been put in and the countertops and stuff and the flooring and walls are all done, all that's done. Yes, there's, yes. We're waiting for natural gas too. Um, on page five, the one cent, so you'll see we added an extra line that has the reimbursement. That's actually, we collected ten dollars from the craft bizarre for all the tables, so that five eighty is all from that. So we just roll it back in there, so we can continue to use it to provide activities and stuff for the community. So, and we're gonna take out the Northern Wyoming, that one, we're not gonna be doing any money on this year, because they've kind of changed their organization layout. Um, you can also see that green waste disposal is up, it's a hundred and fifty-six percent and we're only halfway through the budget and that is all job site services, so. That's just the cost of more, having more trash that we're taking. And the CO control, that's kind of every couple of years, so we didn't know that this was gonna be a year that they needed to purchase it, so that one was kind of out of budget.
Didn't we change the?
They did. So that was, I think that was another reason we had to buy a different type of stuff.
Yeah. It's well, since you, we don't fly every year.
I know.
And they, they're all relying, they don't know, we'll lapse between one this way and then this way, or when it's Africa, it's, it's kind of.
And then the last thing I want to point out is on the natural gas, the last page, so we've kind of made that its own entity. And right now, timekeeping is supposed to be filtering in all our time that the water plant guys go read the meters or do anything. And right now, timekeeping is supposed to be filtering in all our time that the water plant guys go read the meters or do anything. And then when Marlene and I deal with natural gas for filling or for people, that should be going in there, so we're gonna have to re. Calculate those figures so that they do show up, so we have a better estimate of how much time and money we're spending on the natural gas. So I just wanted to make sure you guys have this, and kind of. See where we're going with it, and if you have any questions, please let me know. And I'm still working through and just kind of making sure everything's in the right places. And we'll be starting doing budget worksheet for our workshops pretty soon, so we can get ready for this next big year. And now Jeff.
I have my emotions banned.
Move right, Jeff, two seconds. To accept the attorney orders. Presented. Any more comments, any more comments, all favor? Approval of bills. Boy, just wondering, when somebody built, it doesn't cause for an old permit, no. Kind of like to be able to help this.
And that's kind of, that's why I really wanted to go through this too, and it's like, you know, mostly, it's important that people know that.
Well, I've seen it before, but you know, it just. Sometimes it directs a point home. You start looking at that.
Yeah, the estimate population is about one. Eleven oh four or something. You mentioned what a budget would be for a town's five hundred thousand.
They do a lot of grants.
And they just put one point three nine in the wind back to the reserves. I think they said they're up there like. Eighty nine percent of their. Six months are up to two hundred, if it's not. Or animals, people, so.
Oh, is that water master plan that dealing with just the massive supplier that was that also a piece of the sewer? Our. I just think with the circulation, though, if you know, they probably did that before. It's forward planning for both our water and sewer.
Cannot be that.
Need a motion to approve.
All for those, we may not have sixteen thousand eight hundred and twenty three dollars.
You want discussion, you want discussion, all there?
I.
Like your group payroll of sixteen thousand five hundred and seventy seven dollars twenty two cents.
All second.
You want discussion, what discussion, all there?
I.
Did you adjourn bodies?
Don't have it at this time.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Alright, thank you very much.